How y'all feeling? Brothers and sisters, if you're sitting in the back, could you come up to the front, please? So as those people come in, they can have easy access to seats. It's seven o'clock and we're gonna get started on time. My name is Kofi Tahaka. I have the privilege, the honor, and the responsibility of being the national chairman of the National Black United Front. Today, this evening, I'll be one of your moderators for our community forum. I'm operating in a capacity with a larger group of people called the Community Just Us Coalition. These are a number of different organizations, activists, concerned citizens, that have come together for long-term work and solutions relative to issues that impact our society. If you have been involved with the Community Just Us Coalition, please stand up so that people can see you've been coming out on the Friday night meetings and doing work. Give them a hand. You all can do better than that. I know you can do better than that. Thank you. You know why? Is because since George Zimmerman was found not guilty, there's been a lot of discussion, there's been a lot of protests, there's been a lot of rallies, there's been a lot of talk in the media about what should happen in the plight of black African youth and all of those things. Those persons that you saw stand up have been committed over this time. They haven't been ambulance activists or press conference organizers. They say it has to be something bigger, something more committed to make changes that we wanna see. So that's why we asked for that. It is fitting improper, we're at the Shave Community Center, and it is fitting improper that all things we do begin spiritually, on the word of spirit. We're on a tight timeframe and we wanna maximize the opportunity for the community to ask questions. So I'm gonna call up the Southwest Regional Representative of the Nation of Islam and the Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan, Minister Robert Muhammad, to lead us in a word of prayer. Brother Robert.
May he take a position of prayer that you're most comfortable with. Brother Kofi said, "Please stand." Glory and praise to Thee, O Allah, and bless His thy name and exalt His thy majesty, and there's none worthy of worship but Thee. We seek refuge in Allah from the accursed Satan. O Allah, we seek thy refuge from anxiety and from grief. We seek thy refuge from lack of strength and from laziness. We seek thy refuge from cowardliness and niggardliness. We seek thy refuge from being overpowered by debt and the oppression of men. O Allah, suffice Thou us with what is lawful. Keep us away from what is prohibited, and with Your grace make us free of law, of all that is besides Thee. Amen. Be seated.
When I say Trayvon, you say Martin. Trayvon! 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 Y'all not fired up no more? Oh, it went off of TV, so y'all forgot about the brother, right? Well, we didn't forget about him, and we thank all of you for coming out tonight. We wanna let you know that today, we spoke with Attorney Benjamin Crump, and we asked him, he is the attorney for the Martin family, for Tracy Martin and Sabrina Fulton, and for Trayvon Martin, in his death. How many of you heard him on Minister Robert's Connect the Dot Show today? Good. We spoke with him and we asked him, we said, "We're having this meeting tonight. What is it that you would like, on behalf of the family, to tell the people?" He said two things. He said, "Ask everyone to go to change.org to sign the petition to overturn Stand Your Ground laws in some twenty-odd states." He said, "Everyone who says that they are concerned about our family, about our family, and about the laws that we have, please ask them to go to change.org and sign that petition." Secondly, he said, "If there's a Trayvon Martin amendment that will be placed in these various states where they have Stand Your Ground or similar laws, to please take note of who supports those and who is against those." He told us that Mr. and Mrs., excuse me, Ms. Sabrina Fulton and Mr. Tracy Martin are steadfast in their conviction that they will not allow their son's life to be in vain, that they appreciate all of the love, support, prayers, and work that people have been doing all across the country and all across the world. We asked him, "Did he believe that the Justice Department," which will be a part of our discussion tonight, "will file charges against Mr. Zimmerman?" He said, "He believed only if the people demanded it and continue to demand it." So that is a message directly from Attorney Crump. Let me tell you very briefly about what we've been doing in Community Just Us. Many of the organizations and groups that you have seen, that have rallied and led to protest and marches, we meet here at the Shave Community Center every Friday at 7:00 PM, and we've been meeting here for over a month and a half. And we have been organizing, as I said earlier, for a longer-term commitment. A little later, we'll hear about one of our next planned activities. How many of y'all think the Shave Community Center is a beautiful place? We need Brother Deloyd, the Executive Director of the Shave Community Center, to come up and give us an official welcome. Brother Deloyd Parker, give him a hand.
Brothers and sisters, welcome to Shave, and on behalf of the staff, all the staff at Shave, because we have a lot of staff, volunteers, the children, the Board of Directors, most importantly, our elders, we welcome you to Shave Community Center. As we were meeting here and talking here, about sixty parents were meeting and organizing at the other building, because their children will be coming in these doors after a long summer, again Monday morning. We stand here for our children. We stand here and we fight, we struggle for our children. This is a very important gathering, so we welcome all of you to Shave for this gathering. We also like to welcome all you justice and freedom-loving people who stand here and sit here today, because you're special to us, extremely special. So we welcome you, but we want you to abide by the rules that we have at Shave Center, and that's respect. So we're gonna have a wonderful, very, very productive, healthy gathering tonight. We will respect one another, and I'd like to ask permission from Elder Durden, Elder Denver. Elder Durden, where are you? Do we have your permission to proceed? Elder Denver, do we have your permission to proceed? We have to get our elders' permission, it's nothing phony, it's real, because they, we got here on their shoulders. I know it. So again, on behalf of Shave, we welcome you, and we look forward to a very productive session. If you have some issues, if you need something, I'll be here. If you have any health issues, let us know, we have a couple of nurses in the building, we'll identify them for you, and one doctor in the building that will identify for you to help you. So if any issues that you have, let us know, please do that. So Brother Kofi, thank you very much for this opportunity, and we look forward to you having a very, all of us having a very productive meeting. Again, give yourselves another hand, brothers and sisters.
All right, thank you, Brother Deloyd Parker. I wanna bring up next, a strong sister, a freedom fighter, somebody that you want in your corner. She's the Southern Representative, Southern Regional Representative of the New Black Panther Party, and the Houston Chairwoman of the New Black Panther Party. You've seen her going all the way, our sister, your sister, Sister Crystal Muhammad.
Black power?
Black power.
Our power to the people.
That's what we say.
All right, well, we're here today to get down to business. There are many people who have come out that wanna find out what it is that the Department of Justice is actually doing towards getting justice. I've been a community organizer since I was nineteen, organizing with the Nation, the National Black United Front, the Shave, the Shrine, Incobra, you name it, the Panther Party, whatever's for our liberation, I've been a part of and have been schooled by all of these organizations. And today, we are gonna be talking directly with the top cop for this region, for the Department of Justice, Ken Magison, who represents the Southern District of the U.S. Attorney's Office for the Department of Justice. We got some very distinguished people in our audience. I see we got Harold Dutton, our state representative, who is a lawmaker. We've got Randall Calhoun, who is a freedom fighter, got a new dude going on right there. He's an attorney who has taken on many of these top cases. What I wanna say, since I've been involved in the New Black Panther Party since 2002, there's been dozens of cases of excessive force by the police, murders by the police, and for years, we've been hearing that the Department of Justice is looking into it, the Department of Justice is investigating. And we're here to get some answers and to get some direct, uh, direct answers from the Department of Justice as to what is this process that you say you're investigating? Is it ongoing? You know, so we wanna open up this event for the people. I wanna remind everybody that this coalition that brought this together formed directly after the murder, and when Trayvon Martin, killer, George Zimmerman, was allowed to walk free before the eyes of the world. And many of us organized, we had marches, we had demonstrations, we did, you know, we vented, but at the end of the day, the work has to be done. And we came together here at this Shave Community Center, which is our embassy, and for weeks, every Friday, we're here organizing for human rights. This is bigger than civil rights, it's about human rights. At this point, I would like for everybody who's been a part, and what we formed was a coalition called Community Just Us. Just Us, because we're not getting any justice. So this effort has been the work of a lot of people here today that are moving around. So I would like for everybody, Durden, don't go nowhere, come on, front and center, Sister Fumi, front and center, please, ma'am, Gloria, everybody that's been a part of Community Justice, please stand up. Marcus, Dawn, everybody that's been a part of, PJ, Gloria, Brother Ali, Brother Chef, Sister Sada, everybody, we have late-night meetings in this place. Sometimes we have to run, uh, stand up with the Houston Peace and Justice, y'all have been a part of this. This is a multinational effort that we're doing. This event tonight is actually being livestreamed, live, so that people who couldn't make it here today can see it, and so that we can document our efforts to get justice. So everybody that wants justice, throw your fist in the air and say, "Justice!"
Justice!
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
When do we want it?
Now!
How we gonna get it?
By any means necessary!
Right on, our power to the people, so I'm gonna sit down, because I'm ready to get down to business and get this party started. Brother Kofi?
All right, very good. Y'all gotta act like y'all fired up, because we in the Shave Community Center. Stands for Self-Help for African People Through Education. We wanna, um, as we bring in the United States Attorney for the Southern District of Texas, we wanna let you know that we had a protest at his office. They would not allow us into the office. How many of y'all were there at that protest? We asked the question, "Wait a minute, is this eighteen thirteen or 2013?" Right?
Right.
We called back, we got a meeting, some of us went into the meeting, and our message to the U.S. Attorney was, "Come out and see your constituents. Come out and hear from the constituents." We are appreciative of those elected officials who are here, those who are running for office, Miss Provost, Sister Sada, Mr. Kubash, you already mentioned Harold, I think both of our congresspeople will be coming, but this is not a political event. This event, or this activity, is so that we can get to questions and answers of significance to those people who are in power, who we are told that we should look to to deliver justice. How many of y'all are down with that? Very good. So without anything else being said, I wanna call up Ms. Kim Milstead. She is Community Relations with the Department of Justice, and she can introduce Mr. Magison and the people that will be coming up, the gentleman that will be coming up with him. Ms. Kim, out there? With that being said, you can go, as we wait, you can go to communityjustus.com. And you can find out the ongoing efforts and information that we have and that we're organizing around. Very good. Yes, Sister Crystal has one announcement before we go to the U.S. Attorney.
Come on up, Mr. Magison. All right. The Community Just Us, we, like I said, we are a working organization, and we have events going on and other things that we're planning throughout the year. We're planning on keeping this movement going, so we wanna invite everybody to come out and get involved every Friday night at seven o'clock. But next Wednesday at seven o'clock, at the Shrine of the Black Madonna, we will be holding a forum on racism and white supremacy. And we wanna do an open and honest dialogue about the systems of racism, about the institutionalizing of racism, and we're gonna do a self-analysis as to our own sickness with dealing with white supremacy and a black inferiority complex. And so, we wanna invite everybody to come out next week, you know, we're gonna, Wednesday at seven o'clock at the Shrine of the Black Madonna, we're gonna keep this movement going. How many people can make it out next Wednesday? Raise your hand. All right? All right? So we wanna go ahead and get this ball rolling. Our representatives from the Department of Justice are here, and we wanna open up the floor and get this party started. Our power to the people.
That's what we say.
All right, thank you. Next Wednesday, I'm gonna bring up Kim Milstead. She is the Community Relations Person for the Department of Justice. Kim, come on up, Kim.
First of all, I'd like to say hello and thank you for welcoming us into your home. And first of all, I would like to introduce to you our gentleman of our U.S. Attorney, Mr. Kenneth Magison, and he'll go from there.
I can take it from here. How are you? I'm Ken Magison, I'm the United States Attorney for the Southern District of Texas. The reason I'm here today is because this man to my right asked me to come. I said, "He asked me, 'What is it gonna take to get me here?'" I said, "Call my secretary and set up a meeting." He did. We met, and after that meeting, they asked me if I would come to a town hall. I said, "Sure." I said, "Let me just discuss what we're gonna do, so that it's something positive for the community, I don't wanna waste everybody's time. Something we can't talk about, something we can talk about. I think we have a shared agenda about ensuring that justice is done." So on behalf of the Department of Justice and the United States Attorney's Office, thank you for your phone call, I appreciate it. I'm here today and as the representative of the United States. As many of you already know, I was appointed to this position by the President of the United States in September 2011. The United States Attorney's Office goes back to the Judiciary Act of 1789, one of the first laws passed by the Congress of the United States, was the creation of the Office of the United States Attorney. The United States Attorney represents the interests of the United States in federal district court. And now, there are ninety-four judicial districts throughout the United States, and each one has its own presidentially-appointed United States Attorney. I am the United States Attorney for the Southern District of Texas, so I don't just represent the interests of the United States in the Houston metropolitan area, but I cover an area that goes as far east as Winnie in Chambers County, as far north as Huntsville and up to Madisonville. I cover an area that goes beyond the Houston metropolitan area, down to Corpus Christi, Victoria, Texas, all the way down to Brownsville on the border. I cover McAllen and Laredo, Texas. It is the seventh-largest judicial district in the United States. There's approximately a hundred and seventy-five assisting United States Attorneys who help me in the duties and responsibilities that I have. Civil rights is a critical function of what we do at the United States Attorney's Office, but it's not the only function that we do. We are, work with federal law enforcement, including the FBI, but we also work with the United States Secret Service, the Internal Revenue Service, the Drug Enforcement Administration, the Department of Homeland Security, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, the Office of Inspector General for Social Security Fraud, for Medicare Fraud, for Health and Human Services, for Housing and Urban Development, that's right, for every possible federal agency in the United States that does business here, when they go to court, we represent their interests. We have to concern ourselves with national security. If there's someone who's gonna endanger the populace in this district, we have to be concerned, and we work closely with the FBI. And the reason I'm looking to my left is, this is Al Tribble, Special Agent with the FBI, who I'm gonna turn to in a minute to explain civil rights investigations. But not only that, but we have a huge issue in this part of the world regarding human trafficking. I have a whole human trafficking task force involving people not only being smuggled into this country, but people who are being exploited for sexual and other reasons and can't get out of the slavery that they're currently in, that they're afraid to leave, that they're being driven from city to city for a variety of reasons, either for employment or other exploitation. So we are heavily involved in the trafficking of humans currently in the, in this area. We are heavily involved in public corruption. We just had a case this morning that was announced, Judge Abel Lemus, a state district judge in Cameron County in Brownsville, Texas, was sentenced to seventy-two, seventy-two months in prison because of his involvement in selling his office for money and cases for money in the justice system. We look at all public corruption. We look at that seriously, because you people have an opportunity and an obligation to believe in the institutions that you pay for, that you are part of. And I'm here today because you are the community, I understand that, but I want you to understand the role of the United States Attorney's Office and what we do on a daily basis. We deal with financial fraud, we deal with healthcare fraud, we deal with social security fraud, we deal with identity theft. People, you go to the, you go to the restaurant and somebody swipes your credit card, next thing you know, somebody's using your name and your accounts. You have a bank account, next thing you know, somebody's taking money out of your bank account. You have retirement savings or student loan accounts, all that money's being stolen. Who's gonna, who's supposed to take care of those situations? Well, that's one of the things that we do, and we work with federal law enforcement engaged in that. We go after the drug cartels. We're on the border. The districts of the Southern District of Texas, the Western District of Texas, which covers out to El Paso, the District of Arizona, and the Southern District of California, those four judicial districts in and of themselves are forty percent of the entire federal criminal docket. Why? Immigration and drugs. Immigration is not, is an issue they're taking up in Congress right now, so we're gonna look to Congress to see if there's gonna be any change. But right now, we're under the gun of, if someone enters this country illegally and has a criminal record, then the case is brought to us. But we have made it our policy that we're gonna primarily look at those people who've already been convicted of crimes, who re-enter the country are gonna be our top priority, so that they don't, again, commit additional crimes within our neighborhood. We have other areas that we cover, and I have an Assistant United States Attorney in other offices, as I said, in other parts of the district. But one of the things that we do are vulnerable victims, and the Attorney General of the United States, Eric Holder, specifically talks, as one of his priorities, are about vulnerable victims. And one of the things we talk about a lot is Project Safe Childhood. We do a lot of cases involving child exploitation and child pornography. If we have evidence that people are utilizing the internet to distribute and manufacture or foster child exploitation and child prostitution and child pornographic images, we're gonna take a serious look at that. That's something that we want our children to be safe and apart from, so we deal with that. We deal with violent crime, in terms of aggravated robberies. If we have a serial robber out there who's moving from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, the FBI has a bank robbery task force. We're involved in those situations as well. But, I know you wanna talk about civil rights, but I wanted to give you a sense and purpose of what we do every day. We have to represent the interests of the United States, not any specific individual, but all the individuals. When the President asked me to take this job, and the Attorney General pushed my name in front of the White House, it was for one reason and one reason only, to take the oath of office, to faithfully execute the laws of the United States, and to protect and defend the Constitution and all the rights that appertain thereto. And that's what we do every day. It's not perfect, I'm not gonna say it's perfect, it'll never be perfect, because we're human beings, and we all have our shortcomings, but there's nothing that's gonna prevent us from doing the best that we can possibly do to ensure that justice is for all. One of the things I've asked, and Al is here, and I'm gonna turn it over to Al for about ten or fifteen minutes, is to provide an overview of federal civil rights investigations, and to distinguish and talk about how the FBI gets involved, how you can contact them, what they do, and how it gets over to our office, and then after Al's finished, I'll talk about what happens after the case is done or not done. So, Al Tribble, Special Agent with the Federal Bureau of Investigation, I'll come back in just a minute.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, unlike Mr. Magison, was not appointed by the President of the United States, but my commitment, and my passion is equal to that. I want to impress upon you what I do for the Department of Justice. For the last twenty-two years, I have been a special agent, for almost fifteen years now, I have been charged with investigating civil rights violations, specifically hate crimes, specifically color of law, which means police misconduct. In these investigations, you hear a lot of terms bantered about in the media. You hear the FBI, the Department of Justice is monitoring a case, the FBI is investigating a case, and a lot of individuals don't know what that means. When we are investigating, we're taking an active stance. We are out there, we have an open case, we are investigating, we are interviewing, we are trying to procure evidence to meet the statutes. And I'll get into the statute, because it's very important to understand the elements, there's only four, but we wanna discuss that. So that's what we're doing when we're investigating, when we're monitoring a case, we're looking at what the state prosecution is doing. We're trying to determine at the end of that prosecution whether or not the federal interest has been vindicated with the sentence that has been imposed. So those are the two things you'll hear, investigations, monitoring, so you'll hear that. Specifically, when it comes to civil rights investigations, you hear an awful lot of people say, "My rights were violated." And basically, what does that mean? You hear people say that, they say they were mishandled, "My rights were violated," but there are only a certain finite number of statutes of rights that we're talking about when an individual says, "My civil rights were violated." It's articulated in eighteen USC 245, it's one of the most historic civil rights statutes. And there are specific rights, and those rights are enrolling in a public school or college, participating in any benefit where funds from the federal government are used, applying for employment, voting, or trying... applying for employment, voting or trying to qualify to vote, serving as a juror, what they call traveling in interstate commerce. So when you're talking about someone, it's a hate crime, that component has to be within that statute. Using goods and services of public accommodations, a hotel, riding the bus, those are components of this statute, this civil rights statute. Basically, the most significant legislation that has come about in the last ten years was passed by President Barack Obama in 2009, the Matthew Shepard James Byrd Jr. Hate Crimes Prevention Act, which criminalizes someone that is being attacked because of their race, because of their color, because of their ethnicity. If that should happen, there is no interstate nexus that must be met if that should happen under that statute. With some of these other statutes, you have to have this interstate nexus, which is a minutia of the attorneys that say, "Well, when we go out and we visit a mosque or a church, a house of worship, and say, 'Well, it was vandalized, it was burned,' and we might ask questions, 'Well, when did this happen? Were there any threats?'" We're going to ask, "Well, where do you get your literature from?" We're asking questions that affect interstate commerce. So basically, it's the requirement of the law that has to be met, and there's certain elements, and we have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that someone was targeted because of their race, because of their religion. If there isn't sufficient evidence, the FBI is going to provide what it can to the Department of Justice, and they are going to look at that and say, "If you can get this evidence and we can prove this in a court, we will go forward with an indictment, with an arrest, but if we cannot, we aren't going to investigate it further." That's the simple truth when it comes to civil rights investigations. When people are arrested, there is a presumption that they are not to be subjected to unreasonable search and seizure. And so when someone is alleging excessive force from a police officer or from a corrections officer, the question becomes, was it unreasonable for an officer to shoot them? Was it unreasonable for that officer to use force? What a lot of people don't understand is that use of force is not against the law. It is excessive force that is against the law. And you may ask, "Well, who determines what is excessive? I was hit twice, and I had no reason to be hit. Is that excessive?" Well, it depends. Excessive force is going to be ultimately determined by the Supreme Court if it gets that far. But they're going to look at the offense, they're going to look at the injuries, and they're going to look at the circumstances to determine what is excessive or what was used. So that is the spectrum on both different sides of the room here when you're talking about use of force and excessive force. So far as who can bring about an investigation, any of you can contact our office. The one thing about the FBI is that for three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, you can pick up the phone and contact someone and report an allegation of excessive force. You can report a hate crime. Once we get that information, we swing into action. I want to shift gears a little bit because we talked a little bit about hate crimes and basically what it takes and that there is a finite number of federally protected activities that we're talking about when someone is saying, "I was a victim of a hate crime." The other component is police misconduct. We hear a lot of complaints, we receive a lot of complaints about police misconduct. And we have to prove four components under this statute. Very easily, the first component, we have to prove that an officer committed this act. Were they on duty? Were they in uniform? Were they given authority by the United States to uphold some sort of laws? That's easy to prove. The second component is willful intent, and that is very difficult to prove. You may wonder why we don't get more convictions on police officers. It's because of that component, willful intent. And when we boil it down, when I discuss with my Department of Justice counterparts, counterparts, and say, "Well, what is this willful intent?", we're talking about malice, we're talking about evil motive, we're talking about, "Did the officer know what they were doing was wrong and did it anyway?" So this willfulness component is very difficult to prove. It's not impossible, but it is difficult. The third component is we have to prove that there was a deprivation of a constitutional right. A lot of folks that get arrested say, "Well, I was drinking, the officer asked me to do something, I didn't comply, force was used, my rights were violated." And the question becomes, was the force unreasonable? That is the question. And more often than not, after the investigation is done, it is deemed that it was use of force and it was reasonable, it was not unreasonable for the officer to do what they did. Suffering bodily injury or pain, a lot of folks say, "Well, the cuffs were put on me too tight, they did that intentionally to me." It's very difficult to determine what the intent of an officer is if you do not have witnesses. And that is the component of a lot of these investigations, that you must have witnesses that will come forward and provide details to the FBI. If they don't, we certainly cannot get a prosecution. And lastly, I'm going to end on this. When you're talking about police misconduct, in a lot of instances, if it is going to be a local law enforcement officer, the local district attorney's office is going to prosecute that offense first, okay? And if that prosecution ends in an acquittal, not guilty, in some circumstances, the FBI might come in and say, "Well, now we're going to charge the federal statute, which is deprivation of rights under color of law. If we feel that the conduct is egregious enough, if we feel that we can obtain sufficient evidence to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that this occurred, then there will be a prosecution, then there will be an indictment." But those are-- and there's a handout that's circulating around, I'd like you all to take that. On that, if you want to do additional research, you can look at what the elements are, what the components are, that the government must prove. And it is beyond a reasonable doubt, and it's not impossible, but it's very difficult. So if you're sitting there thinking about, "Why don't we see more convictions? Why don't we see more indictments?", it's because we have to meet those elements to be able to bring about a case. So I thank you for your attention, and I'm going to turn it over to Ken.
Thank you. First of all, I apologize, I got a herniated disc and I'm having trouble sitting in a chair, so it's better to stand up. Sure, these cases are hard, but doesn't mean we're not going to take them. We got a case, call them. You got a problem with the way things are going, write me a letter. I read every letter. I don't-- don't send me an email. Put it in a-- put it in the envelope, stick a stamp on it, "Ken Maggerson, U.S. Attorney, 1,000 Louisiana." If you think something's wrong or you don't like what's going on, send me a letter. I'll respond. Okay. Questions? Now, I asked, and you're standing here--
Yeah.
--for some reason. Why is he standing right behind you?
Because I'm about to tell you how it's going to go.
Well, I'll tell you how it's going to go.
No, I'm going to tell you how it's going to go.
Okay, well, first of all, I'm going to answer the questions that people wanted to hear, and then I'll let you-- then I'll decide whether I'll let you take over.
No, you're in our house.
I understand.
These are your--
I'm your guest.
Yes.
Well, I'm not running for office.
But you got a-- you got a--
I represent the people of the United States of America.
What does your paycheck say?
"United States of America,"
That's right.
--for which it stands. Explain the policy, Sir-- All right, the-- if an individual is interested in learning the specifics of a federal investigation, what avenue is available? The same avenue that would be available to any member of the media. We don't talk about ongoing investigations. End of story. Why? Because every person has a right to a presumption of innocence and a right to counsel if charged. And if I start talking about, in the media or to you or to anybody, what we're investigating, "Oh, did you see what we got on so-and-so today? Or did you hear what the witness said about such-and-so?", it'll ruin you. It'll ruin a person, ruin their reputation. When we have a case, we state it on the public record. We go before a federal grand jury and present the evidence. An indictment is returned, and that is made public. And then every time we have something to say, we say it on the record in court. And if it's not in court, we don't talk about it. Yes, I'll be glad to answer questions from the media. If it's on the record, that's the only way we're going to talk. So, number one, I don't talk about ongoing investigations. If individual-- all right, victims. What happens if I'm a victim of a-- of a case? Well, we have a wonderful law that was passed by Congress called the Victim Witness Rights Act. And after a person is charged with a crime, if you happen to be the victim, whether it's a financial case or whether it's an assault kind of case, like in a civil rights investigation, we have a whole victims-witness coordination available to you, and that we will send you a letter and tell you what your rights are as the victim of the crime, which includes participating in the legal process. You will actually have an opportunity to appear in court and tell the court about your role as the victim in the case. You will be notified as the victim in the case about exactly when the case is coming to court and what the proceeding is about. You will be contacted before any case is disposed of to at least let you know what's going to happen before it happens. So a victim does have the opportunity to participate in the process after the case is charged. The other thing I wanted to mention before turning it back over to Kofi is Kim Milstead, Community Relations. The Department of Justice, outside of me, outside of the U.S. Attorney's Office, outside of the FBI, outside of any other agency, created a Consumer Relations Office. I'm sorry, a Community Relations Office. The Community Relations Office is supposed to be the liaison for the community to other members of-- within the Department of Justice. So if you want to-- you want to talk to me or you want to get to the Department of Justice, there she is, right there. She'll set it up. She'll make sure that if I need to-- if there's something going on in the community that I'm not addressing that needs to be addressed, she will bend my ear and I will respond to her needs because I know she's speaking on behalf of not just this community, but all the communities within the Southern District of Texas. And I know they cover a large area, not just the Houston metropolitan area. But she's only one. I mean, our resources are not that great, but what I'm saying is, you want an ear to me? Here it is. She's available. She's come. Go.
We're about to start with questions and answers. Brother Durst has the microphone. If we can begin to line up, we want to ask, there are two areas that we talked about, and it's been spoken about, and I'm glad the handout is out there. What does it actually mean when you say you're investigating some-- when you're monitoring something, so forth and so on? The other area was about if you've been victimized by the police. We want to ask that each person that has a question to be mindful of the person behind you so that we can get to as many questions as possible. Congressman Al Green, could you come up and take a seat on the stage as well? Is Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee here? We want to ask you, we know that there is a lot of emotion-- Yes, Mr. Tribble can sit in the back. And Congressman Green, if you could sit up there. If we get to our questions, get to our questions so that we can get to as many as possible. With that being said, Brother Durst.
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, Ms. Maxipson.
Maggerson.
For twenty-four years, we have had community mental health conferences, African United Sanity Now, because of the level of racism, white supremacy, and violence. My question is, why is not the Genocide Accountability Act of 2007 apply to police murders and, in retrospect, forty thousand lynch murders in America?
The answer is, when we believe that a crime has occurred that violates federal criminal law, we investigate it, and where the evidence says, we go prosecute it. So I don't know about that specific law. I know that we have a lot of laws on the books, and we prosecute all of them. So in your particular case, the answer is, we prosecute cases where we have evidence of violations of federal criminal law.
Yes, sir. My question is, why should we trust the FBI, the Department of Justice, given its history with historically the UNIA, the Nation of Islam, the Black Panther Party, the SCLC, the Student-- the-- Student Nonviolent Coordinated Committee, the Southern Christian Leadership Committee? And why should we trust you all, given that history, and, most recently, what Asad Shakur was placed on the terrorist list? And I would like to know why she was placed on the terrorist list? And what is the criteria for being placed on the terrorist list? Because, in my opinion, it seems like she was placed for asylum in Cuba.
Number one, I-- You want to clap? Number one, I answer the first question first, the second question, the second. Number one, trust. Trust is earned. If we haven't earned it, don't give it to us. I mean, that's up to you. The second part is, I don't know if anything to do with the terrorist list. I don't-- you know, I assume you're talking about like the-- if there is some list where somebody's been targeted or charged with a crime, that's-- that's another story. We only deal with prosecutions. So again, I go back to the old song, you know, we investigate and prosecute criminal activity. Whether or not someone's on a list has nothing to do with us. I don't decide who's on a list and who's not on a list.
Paul, what is the criteria?
I have no idea.
Who does? Who does?
I assume the Department. Here's Al.
Yeah. I would be more than happy to provide you my number. Our office has several squads that are dedicated to terrorism, and they were well-versed at explaining who makes the list and who doesn't make the list and the criteria for that. So if you wouldn't mind getting with me afterwards, I don't know that I'm in the civil rights arena, but we have experts that work terrorism specifically and-- Well, I'm not equipped to tell you because I don't know. I don't work terrorism, I work civil rights. We have many different components. Oh, absolutely, I will give you my number, you can contact me. Our office would be more than happy to talk about terrorism and how you make the list. That's not a problem.
So what's your number?
Oh, you want now? Okay, it's seven-one-three.
Seven-one-three.
Nine-three-six.
Nine-three-six.
Eight-three.
Eight-three.
One-nine.
One-nine.
And that's really my number.
And your home-- and your home address, sir.
My name is Anthony Childress, and my case was actually-- I was actually--
What's the microphone?
--in a grand jury hearing against an officer that actually beat me down October the 7th of 2011. And I was told on March 25th that the Feds was actually investigating my case and like potentially four or five other cases. And I actually heard one of you speak and say that we would actually be, you know, when I-- we would be informed on the results of the case. And since March 25th, I haven't heard anything from anybody, neither me nor my lawyer has heard anything about, you know, what is happening. I had six teeth knocked out, two black eyes, you know, fractured nose, my beauty attached to my face.
Give me your name again.
My name is Anthony Childress.
Anthony Childress.
Oh, Childress, Childress, okay. I have-- I have that. We can talk. You've got my number, we'll talk. I have your case, okay?
Let me ask a question. Let me answer a question. For somebody like Anthony, is there a timeframe in your investigation that they should say something is going to happen or nothing is going to happen in the investigation?
Excellent question. Typically, in an investigation such as yours, we don't do anything until-- well, not should say do anything, we're not going to initiate charges unless the internal affairs investigation has been completed. Internal affairs investigations take anywhere from six to eight months to complete. That's just with the local law enforcement agency. Now, once they're completed, their investigation, we take a look at what their facts are and we initiate our investigation. A civil rights investigation, a fast one, will take twelve months, okay? So I will absolutely get with you because I have all kinds of notes on what's going on with your particular case, and I can explain that to you. So we'll be in touch. No, actually, well, you see me, give me your number. I'm pretty sure I have it, but I can tell you what's going on.
Next question. Hello, I'm Randall Allen, a civil rights lawyer here in town. And the FBI traditionally, the local FBI, has one of the lowest or the lowest complaint-to-prosecution ratio in civil rights cases. Ninety-nine point seven percent of all complaints are not-- do not result in charges. To repeat that again? Uh, ninety-nine point seven-- Uh, 99.7% of all civil rights complaints in the United States Southern District, federal complaints, do not result in civil rights charges. It's the lowest in the United States.
Damn.
Furthermore, the last 300 HPD shootings in a row, 300 in a row, have been nubiled by the grand jury. The people in the community are not confident in the local government. That's why we're having you here today. We're not confident in the local government, that's the city and the state, or even the county, to do anything about it. So, one of the reasons we're here is, well, there's the federal government. They have their federal rights laws. Based upon the statistics and the anecdotal information, the locals are not doing their job. What will you do to instill confidence in the people, in the federal government's role in civil rights violations?
Yes.
Again, I'm not going to make a comment about the generalities. I will make a comment about specific cases. And that is that, again, we judge every case individually on its own merit, and we don't bring cases simply to meet a statistical average or below or above an average. So, insofar as what the state does, I'm not going to speak to that. But we also work, and this is for your benefit, it's not just my call. We work with Main Justice and the Civil Rights Division in Washington, D.C., on every civil rights investigation. And they, if they don't like what we're doing, they can bring the case on top of me. Or if I don't like what they're doing, I can bring the case on top of them. So, there's actually two eyes or two sets of prosecutors looking at the case through the eyes of a civil rights investigation. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Maxson.
Ah, Sheila Jackson. Good to see you. Good to see you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Maxson. It's been many years since you and I hooked up at once, 1976 in 208 District Court.
There you are. How, what are you doing here?
Back then, we both had...
Let me, let me, let me... All right, go ahead.
Don't do that, Jim. Don't do that. Let me just ask a question, okay? Um, I'm sure, you said something earlier, and you and I know each other well, and I know kind of man, y'all. And you talk about trust. I'm sure you know what happened in the Eastern District with John Kraft, his statement that he made as far as the...
I read the newspapers.
All right. I'm not going to, I'm not going to repeat the quote without a man inside a riot.
We want to know.
But, you know, for him to make the statement that he made about Trayvon Martin and the situation, uh, obviously, he should be terminated. Because to, to take the attitude, oh, this is my personal opinion, talk that watermelon crap and stuff that just don't go over very well. How can we trust U.S. attorneys when you have someone covering up that stuff and saying, oh, that's not his professional opinion, his personal opinion?
Look, as you...
Trayvon Martin, we know better than that.
Exactly.
He needs to be fired. Quick. Now, tell me how that's going to be happening, man? The commotion's huge, they go flying all over the place in the Eastern District.
I appreciate what you're saying, and I can understand your anger. However, as you know, I'm not going to touch this with a 10-foot pole because it's not in my district, and it's not a matter, I understand, but it's inappropriate for me to talk about personnel matters in somebody else's shop. So, I'm sympathetic to the criticism, but that's as far as I'm going to go with it.
Could you, um, let me ask a question as we go to the next member. Could you explain to us who you report to and how, do you report directly to Attorney General Holder, or what are the layers between yourself and Attorney General Holder and President Obama?
There are none. I report, actually, I don't report, I report to, I serve at the wishes of the President of the United States. I work within the Department of Justice because that's where my administration comes from. The Executive Office of United States Attorneys administers my budget, and I have to work within the confines for certain approvals. We, of course, follow the Attorney General Eric Holder's priorities in this district as best we can. However, I have the authority to temper those priorities to ensure that the district's needs are met. We have input from a variety of sources on that. But ultimately, the only person I'm responsible to is the President of the United States. Next question.
Yes, I'd like to say, thank you for coming out, sir.
My pleasure.
My question is directed towards the HPD and the Harris County Sheriff's Department. And basically, the areas of concern that I have and other minorities have is pretty much this. We are concerned about racial profiling. We are concerned about police brutality. We are concerned about stop and frisk. We also are concerned about this thing called justified homicide. In addition to that, we, we have had, we have had two cases with the Chad Holley incident, whereby I personally feel, and a lot of people personally feel, that there were excessive force used in that particular case. Okay? Also, recently, there's been another incident that happened back in March with this case in Galveston. So, I'd like to know, how does your organization monitors the behavior of these type of police activities?
Number one, as you may or may not be aware of, the Department of Justice is very active in monitoring all police departments. They've gotten oversight in New Orleans. They have, they've just settled an agreement with the City of Miami regarding their police department. They've looked at other police departments. I think Portland, Oregon was another one. So, certainly, they review the activities of both sheriff's offices and police departments if there's some kind of long-term issue regarding the violation of civil rights. This is done through a federal lawsuit, and then the Department of Justice is asked to participate in that. So, I would ask that if you feel this is true, then certainly, you know, a lawsuit can be brought regarding if there seems to be an ongoing pattern of illegal activity. There are rights that are conferred under the civil rights laws regarding civil injunctions. So, there is remedies, and it has happened under this administration.
Hi. I could never imagine a day in my life that I would have to survive through what I have survived through. In my younger years, I worked for general counsel. In my elderly years, I worked for the U.S. Attorneys. I'm not a criminal. I've never committed a crime a day in my life, but they stole my identity. I've been so abusively mistreated for some of the same concerns that was addressed to you today. I have a legal disability, and the reason why I am legally disabled, I'm neurologically impaired, actually, from walking canes to the crutches and wheelchair. And I've survived operations because a lot of unnecessary excessive force has been used. My disability, we had terrorism in New York, and I was a victim of circumstances, and I suffered brain damage. So, I have memory loss. In cases where I've had seizures in public or in incidents where police has have triggered my conditions and I can't respond or I can't remember, they get, you know, excessively out of control. That's been anywhere to death threats or threats to do bodily harm to me. I was told by the FBI that there was no excessive force used on me in a recent incident from a Walgreens store that was. Now, back in 2007, I have the papers here that I filed with the U.S. Attorneys where I worked in New Jersey. They subject me to terrorist threats and brutal attacks, perform chants over me. I had not done anything but went on the premises of Walgreens to make a, to make a purchase. My question is, in my situation, I don't understand why the FBI is not taking my complaints seriously. I've lost my career. I've lost my livelihood. All they're saying is no.
Thank you. Al?
Al. Tell, tell me your name again.
Ms. Shaw.
Ms. Shaw.
Ms. Shaw. Ms. Shaw, you and I have talked on the phone, and we can talk some more about your particular circumstance. But I want to impart to you and to everyone here that the FBI and the Department of Justice truly takes every case seriously. However, the components of the law, of the statute, must be met before an indictment can be sought. And on the piece of papers that I did circulate, and in our conversation with you and I, I kind of explained to you what use of force and excessive force is. And just so everybody understands, if you have an allegation of excessive force, your injuries must be consistent with excessive force. What I'm saying is, and I do not, I'm sorry what happened to you happened, but if you don't come away with broken bones, if you don't come away with being shot, and you cannot show that your injuries are consistent with excessive force, you cannot meet the elements of the statute. So, like I say, you have my number, and you can...
I have a damage claim, and I may have to have an operation right now under medical care. I've been injured. I used my memory to blow into my head that happened to me in another state. This is ridiculous. Police...
Right. I understand the other state. I didn't investigate what happened in the other states, but I did thoroughly investigate what happened here at the Walgreens and, you know, we both know where it happened.
What's your number again, Al? 713...
713, 936, 8319. We have talked.
Remember, this does not stop you from your own personal cause of action.
Well, hello. Good evening.
How are you?
I'm glad I have the opportunity to meet you this evening.
Nice to meet you.
My name is Vita Belford, and I am the Superintendent of Elfonso Crutch Life Support Center Charter School. We have been dealing with egregious civil rights violation to our, myself, my students, parents. And the problem that we're having is with the Texas Education Agency, with the disenfranchisement of the African-American students, and the mass incarceration. A lot of our student, the majority of our students, while we're in litigation, were not able to enroll in any other school. Problem with the federal protective rights. I notified, I talked to the Justice Department, as well as I talked to, I filed with USDA. What I'm trying to find out, because I talked to Washington on the complaint process, and if it could be done locally, that would be great, because of the fact that Texas Education Agency stays in all of the courts, all the way to the Texas Supreme Court, through the Third Court of Appeals and State District Court, that they are accountable to no one. So, they need to be held accountable to someone. They're not accounted to judges, legislatures, nor the State Board of Education. So, we want some accountability for what is happening to our children, and especially the type of school I have, is a criminal justice system. I service 18 school districts. I deal with Fort Bend and Harris County probation and parole, and the majority of my students were incarcerated for not meeting the seven-day time period of attendance with their court supervisory orders. A lot of our kids were murdered on the street because they weren't in school, a lot committed suicide. So, I wanted to find out, when we file our complaint, and, you know, I have studied this very well because I have filed a federal case in Kenneth Hoyt's courts a while back. So, I understand the deprivation of the color, under the color of the law, that I just want to find a way for Texas Education Agency to be accountable for our African-American children and to ensure success for our children, to make sure they have a proper and a constitutional right to attend school and have an equitable access to an adequate education.
Excellent.
Okay. The answer is that we represent the United States, so we represent the interests of the Department of Education. If the Department of Education brings a lawsuit, we're the ones that would bring it on their behalf. So, we would have to get it from the Department of Education. If they brought a lawsuit on behalf of the federal government because of some illegality or improper use of the law regarding the Texas state education system, then we would represent the interests of the Department of Education, not an individual, because we can only represent the interests of the United States. So, like I said, every federal agency that goes to federal district court, the United States Attorney's Office would represent that agency. So, in your particular case, the only thing I, without getting into all the facts and details, if the Education Department asked us to go forward with litigation, we would.
Let me ask some question about that. So, how would she get the Department of Education?
It's up to them. She would have to convince the department that there's...
You don't know what the procedure or...
I have no idea.
Okay.
I have no idea.
Thank you, Ms. Belford.
Because there's so, there's so many ways of, that you can imagine that there's, agencies are going to bring lawsuits, or people either suing the Department of Education, or the Internal Revenue Service, or the Social Security Administration, or the Department of Army, or, you name a federal agency, I can't even begin to think of all the names of the federal agencies that may be involved in community affairs. Housing and Urban Development, Health and Human Services. If they get sued, or they want to bring suit, we're the ones who do it. So, we're the lawyers for the United States. So, that's how we would interact. Sir?
When we are violated by the police, what good is the Freedom of Information Act if the government's going to block it in the first place? December 30th of 2011, it was a shooting in Sunnyside, the area I'm from, eight blocks from my business. And they blocked the Cullen Boulevard off, so the traffic had to come through the neighborhood. As I was standing outside, I just asked a question, can we get a description of the suspect? I became the suspect. While standing on my property, my truck is illegally searched, I had spoken to Mr. Trivel back there. It was six white officers, and they pretty much wanted to pull their triggers. They asked me several times where I fell, even though they had two government-issued IDs in their hand, my gun license as well as my driver's license. Then they continued to ask me, do I have any guns on me? I said, yes, it's on, it's on my right hip. Then he hollered louder, he have a gun! So, when he said that, the other five could have opened fire on me. But when you talk about this type of thing, they pretty much have to kill you or beat the hell out of you for you all to react. Now, we trying to avoid all that. When we went to city council, I still haven't got the proper response from the mayor or the police chief. So, at the end of the day, what good is the Freedom of Information Act if they're not going to release it to us?
Well, Freedom of Information Act pertains to the federal government, and that would be records that we would have. I don't know whether or not the City of Houston or the State of Texas has something equal to that. So, we do respond, and you can go to court and get that enforced if you feel that it's improper. Ma'am?
How you doing? My name is Althea. I'm originally from Alabama, so I recently moved to the state, but been doing some research and everything. Come to find out, like, the number one killer in African-American communities is actually abortions. So, that should be something that we should be worrying about, rather than worrying about whether or not the cops are protecting us. So, my question is, how, how should the community feel about being protected, saved, and served by law enforcement that they feel like they can't even trust? I mean, I guess it's a piggyback question to what everybody has already asked.
Oh, I know. The only thing I could answer about, I mean, you keep bringing up the trust issue, and trust is earned. So, if we don't earn your trust, then you shouldn't trust us. That's the bottom line. But that's what we're supposed to uphold. But insofar as abortion is concerned, that's the only thing that we relate to in abortion is the protection of doctors' offices.
Mr. Maxson, you mentioned earlier, like, in New Orleans, when there was a pattern that was established that the police department violating human rights. You said that a lawsuit could be bought by the people against the Department to get it under federal oversight. How is that processed, or what are the steps that we need to do to get that done?
What you would do is contact the Civil Rights Division, send them the evidence or the information that you have that demonstrates that, and the Civil Rights Division would respond out of Washington. Right now, Jocelyn Samuels is the Acting Assistant Attorney General for the Civil Rights after Thomas Lopez is now the Secretary of Labor. So, you just petition them and ask them to look into this matter and cite your complaint. Cite what you feel is all the issues that haven't been addressed so that the police department, if you, in your opinion, should be monitored. Next.
Yes, sir. Hello, Mr. Ken.
Sure.
I just basically have a question for you. I noticed out of your jurisdiction, but maybe you can help me in my, my search to find justice. Yes. Life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, that's what we all guaranteed under the Constitution.
Actually, the, never mind.
Okay, yeah.
Declaration of Independence.
Right. Under the Constitution. And we still under that Constitution, right? Okay. So, what I want, my question is, Trayvon Martin, okay, he has that inelible right. He left the store on his way home. He had that right to go home without anybody attacking him. Ultimately, he end up dying. So, what I want to know is, are they, how are they going in the investigation? Are they still investigating?
Right now, the matter is in front of Eric Holder, the Attorney General of the United States, and the Civil Rights Division of the Department of Justice. It's a matter in front of the Middle District of Florida, because it's their judicial district. So, all, all those questions need to be sent to Main Justice. And if you want to, write to Attorney General of the United States.
He didn't answer me. Fuck.
Sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't. Go ahead.
Hello. Giving honor to everyone that's here. I appreciate Agent Trivel, and I appreciate you all being here. What I don't really appreciate is an attitude, and I'm not sure if anybody else feels that, but you have an, you seem to have an attitude that's flippant, your posture, your comments. You know, I... You know, I- I don't know, I mean, if that's your nature, if that's just your nature, and you're not really trying to be any kind of way, but I'm saying that it's a little offensive, the way that you are presenting yourself and presenting your information.
Well, that's who I am. You have to be true to yourself, so.
I'm pretty good at that. It's interesting, because I wanna kinda piggyback on a lot of the questions and bring them down to about you, and I'm glad my sister and friend this way asked you this question, because you were saying that it wasn't your shop, and when Mother Denver was talking about all of the lynchings and deaths that have happened because of attitudes that seemingly are like yours, I mean, you make it a real good person in a movie to stand for white supremacy. And that might be because there is a sense of white supremacy of the systemic racism that's in this country, and we aren't seeming to fix it. So my question to you really is, while you couldn't talk about somebody else's house, I'd like to know what they do in your shop, and how you would respond to overt- forget covert, because I think that we need to put certain people in programs to get them de- racisti- deprogram. But at the same time, it's a respect factor. We have respected you, and so we're asking you to earn our trust right now by telling us, how do you keep your shop? Do your people know that if they get caught in offenses, uh, doing anti-justice things to individuals because of their color or their ethnicity, how do you respond to that? And how can we know that you respond that way to that?
Okay.
Good question.
Well, I'm sorry if my nature offends people, I don't mean to, however. I can only be myself. Insofar as my shop is concerned, I'm very proud of what we do, I'm very proud of the people that work there, and the roles that they play in their community, and that there is no racism or other improper use of, you know, religion, or color, or national origin whatsoever in my office, that we have what I consider to be a very diverse shop, and that everybody does have, in fact, equal opportunity, and that I'm proud of my record on equal opportunity. And I'm sorry by coming here if I've offended anybody, but I was invited to come to answer your questions, that I can and I will.
Thank you. Next question.
How you doing? My name is Robin Saint Seer. I've been like ten hurricanes, and my identity was stolen here in Texas through search. I applied for a job, and they told me go through the other search, so I wanna know how they can get that information. Can they fingerprint everybody?
No, we can't fingerprint everybody, but insofar as stolen identities, it's happening all the time, every day to all of us. My identity's been stolen twice.
Hello, I'm Marion Tolan. I'm Robbie Tolan's mom, the kid that was shot in Bel Air, Texas. And I heard you out in clear talk about how difficult your job is, and how much area your job covers, but what am I to do? What am I to tell my child, who is not a criminal, who has never been in any criminal activity, that you're just to get- get a pat on the back and just keep on going, take that bullet that's still in your liver and live with it, when you did nothing wrong? And the Justice Department has done nothing to help me. Nothing. And you say file a lawsuit? I filed a lawsuit. It landed in Melinda Herman's court. She dismissed it, qualified immunity. The officer was just doing his job. And that officer was not just doing his job. I filed an appeal. One of the judges on my appeal was Judge Edith Jones, who is now under investigation for making racist comments. So is that in your department? Is, you know, you say file a lawsuit, a lawsuit is not the answer. Now, in the courts, they have a difficult time when it's somebody white that has had white against black crime.
Right.
It's- the charges are written- written in- to make it difficult to convict, but when it's black on white crime, they have no problem writing those charges. Sir, is that in your office?
Right.
Is that under your jurisdiction?
Yes, except it was- the case was done before I got to the office.
So what am I to do at this point? What am I to do? What are mothers to tell their sons to go on? What am I to do? I've contacted Congressman Sheila Jackson Lee's office. I have gotten no assistance. I need some answers. Give me a roadmap. Tell me what I can do step by step to make a change. We have to work for change, sir. If you did not come here today for change, then why did you come? Because we need change, and we need answers, and we need a roadmap. We have to work for- we have to be working towards something. We have got to. Tell me, who can I contact tomorrow?
Right.
To put people in the Bel Air Police Department's office, to look over their shoulder, to make them accountable.
Right.
Tell me who, and I'll do it. We need answers.
Don't move, since I'm asking you. All right, all right.
Any response?
I mean, you know, she feels how she feels, the system, if it felt you didn't work, it didn't work.
That's your son!
Go ahead.
Next question.
Excuse me, wait a minute. I would like to remind everybody that Wednesday, we're gonna be doing a forum on racism and white supremacy, as it deals with the system, as it deals with how we engage with each other, but this- the term white supremacy, this is what we keep backing into with all these questions and responses, is as if we are inhuman. It's as if you could come into the room with two hundred people and just disregard what we're saying. That lawyer said that only point-three percent of these cases you investigate even get anything done. Ninety-nine point-seven percent of the cases are dismissed, because this attitude of dismissiveness that you are representing, sir, is being represented in the state, in the courts, by the federal-
Well, first of all, my role is to serve as a peacemaker. Certainly, change cannot come if we just continue to sit on our positions. We've got to learn how to- we're all different. All of us are different. I come to you and ask you, let's look away from the personality, and try to see what we can do to bring peace and healing for all of us.
We want justice, ma'am.
We understand justice is what we want.
We've never got it, ma'am.
But we've got to get away- we've got to find a way to learn to talk to each other, with each other, and not at each other.
We're talking to you, ma'am.
And I employ the community. We have services that we can offer to the community, so we can learn the difference in diversity, as she's saying, the racism seminar. We have programs where we can work with the community, the Department of Justice, Community Relations. We don't need this to be disruptive.
It's disrespectful.
Change only comes when we decide to listen and hear each other. I understand that, my sister.
Don't give us tokenism, ma'am.
I'm not here to be a token. I am a product of Third Ward Houston Jack Yates. I've lived through this system. I've walked these streets. I'm from Acus Home, the four-fold. I stood there. I've lived here, but I still know that we have to learn to live and work with each other. We cannot get there fighting. Okay? So let's hear each other.
You murder us, you beat us.
Okay, yes, go- oh.
See, what- what- what happened, that's Robbie Tolan's mother.
That's right.
He was shot in his driveway when he came home.
That's right.
And we're saying that there was no justice through the courts, there was no justice through the civil system, and she just told us there was no justice through the federal system. So what we would suggest to you, Mr. Magison, and we'll do it as well, you take this up to Attorney General Holder, but then again, you said you served President Obama at his will. Take that concern, because she asked a question, what could she do tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
And that was a- that's a- that's a woman who was traumatized by seeing her son shot. She was mishandled by the police, so we want answers. That's a reasonable question. The process didn't work, so we need to give her some answer of what she could do. And if we don't have an answer, then we just don't have an answer through this venue, right? Next question.
Next question.
You're an establishment, that's the point.
Okay, I just- a lot today, we had a lot of talk about how you have to establish excessive force, there's something to be done, but we never had any talk about what establishes the use of force in general. What's the- what established the initial use of force? Or is it just up to the cop?
Did you get- got the question?
That's excellent, excellent question.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I can only respond to that by saying, officers have the protocol to use force or not to use force. They have manuals which dictate when they can use force and when they cannot use force. Now, we are all humans, and sometimes humans make mistakes, but if you are non-compliant, now, I want everybody to hear me when I say this, if you are non-compliant to an officer, you open the door for the use of force. And when I say non-compliant, if an officer says, "Step out of the car," and you don't step out of the car, that officer can pull you out of the car, can yank you out of the car. If you fall upon exiting that car and break your jaw, there is no district attorney's office that is going to say, "I am going to bring that officer up on charges." So there's something that we can learn here about just interacting with law enforcement. If you are non-compliant, if an officer goes to grab you, and before you even touch that officer, you yank back, that is what they call, and you know the word, resisting. And when you resist, you open the door for using force.
Sir, we have a line. We have a line.
Okay.
And I don't believe you addressed anything.
I hope I answered that question.
I don't believe you addressed anything, but I do want to appreciate you and your counterparts, the peacemaker in addition, for entertaining us, 'cause that is all that you have done, entertained us with Google Facts, Google Facts, and anything that I can go on, you know, US.gov and find. So I do appreciate your duties and responsibilities well drawn out to the people. We heard you, and what you are capable of. Thank you. My question lies actually to you, sir. You said beforehand that the intent of the officers are only determined to be good or bad, or however it will happen.
Willful intent, the word is willful intent.
Thank you so much. The willful intent of the- I appreciate you. The willful intent of the officer is determined only if there's a witness present, and I do not understand why the validation of the victim has no say whatsoever in the cause, and I also want to know why that is put in the witnesses' hands to determine the intent of the police officer. The hiring people of the police officers should be in charge of determining the intent of them, and how they do their job, why they do their job. We do not want to know what you do, but why you do it. Who are you behind this badge? Because that is who's hurting us. It's not the police officers just in general, it's the people behind the officer, the people who hold these positions, excuse me. So I just- I want you to address that, the actual people who hold these positions, we were not looking to you to speak at you, as it was put. We are speaking to you in concern, not because we want to pinpoint and finger, but is there an answer to the appointment of these officials? Is there a discretion when it comes to appointing these officials that are, you know, concerned about civil rights, that was just, you know, a minor matter that you alluded to before? Please, thank you.
I'm not sure what minor matter you're referring to, but I take my job quite seriously, and to answer your question, is anybody concerned about hiring, I would suggest that the attorneys that represent the law enforcement agencies, especially our own, have a protocol for hiring officers, and they follow that protocol. And if you meet the criteria, if you pass the training academy, you become an officer. As I want to address your other question, willful intent is very difficult to determine, and it is not only determined by witnesses. The victim certainly has a say in it, but there are other dynamics and other components that go along with who that victim actually is. I could go into the details of that, but I think that would just bore you. But witnesses are critical to making cases. No attorney wants to go into a courtroom with a- without witnesses, and I'm going to tell you this, no one likes to hear the truth, but if you are going to take the word of an officer versus the word- word of someone that is committing a criminal offense, who do you think a grand jury is going to believe? We all know the answer, okay? It's not right, but it is reality.
Okay, Mr. Trivel, we- we uh- every black man in this building, and you're an FBI agent, all the way down to the congressman that went to the restroom, I guess, knows- everyone, every black man in this building knows how to act when a policeman comes on the scene. 'Cause we got to tell our children. And I couldn't sit here no longer, almost, boy, I almost went to the bathroom on myself listening to the attorney. I couldn't sit here no longer and be able to face my son, five years old, and my wife, while you sit here and make a mockery, the attorney, make a mockery out of this whole proceedings, and say that's just in your nature. And you may be correct. Some of us believe that is in your nature, and you know what go along with that. Now, I'm not asking for a response from what I just said, but you understand what I'm saying. That may be in your nature, but you need to correct your nature. You shouldn't come here and insult us. We're not no clowns for you to come here and insult. We don't care if you got the United States government behind you, we're men and women.
That's right.
Better act like it, 'cause we're gonna risk- nobody in this audience, up until Gail pointed out that you were acting like a savage, everybody in this audience respected you from the time you got on that building and that podium, and told Coffey you gonna tell him how it go. And we still didn't say nothing. We gave you opportunity. You had a mother and a father. You embarrassing your mother and father.
I don't mean to sound abstract or concrete, but this is a little personal, and I'm trying to find out if any personal issues can be addressed here to get information to help you. I have gone to the family court office, and they have referred me to the law library, and I have used the library and have gotten an affidavit notarized, and I ask you to understand, under sworn facts, I'm eighteen years of age, of sound mind, or I am over eighteen years of age and of sound mind and capable of making this affidavit. I plead my reason of sanity in that I bought a house and paid a mortgage and got married in nineteen eighty-three. My question is, I gave birth to two children and called the FBI and asked for help. Neither one of my children are present with me. I don't know if they're dead, I don't know what has happened to them, but when I called the FBI, the FBI said, "Your children are well and okay." I have not been in touch with my children for years, but I've tried to stay in contact with them up until two thousand eight.
but I've tried to stay in contact with them up until 2008.
You're, you're looking for your children? If I want to understand, and you said you contacted the FBI?
Yes.
When did you last contact them?
I contacted FBI in 1980, no, in 1987. And they were with me for a part-time off and on while I was driving from the hospital in Houston going north. But what I'm saying is, they told me they were okay, but they weren't okay. They weren't with me.
See Al, see Al after this, Al.
Yeah. You, you might have to just talk to me about that. Because we, we investigate missing children, but I'm not sure if that's the
Okay, thank you.
circumstance.
On the podium, first of all, my name is David Sinister with Sinister Media. On the podium, we see pictures of Trayvon Martin. And I think that it's obvious that there's a lot of people that's upset concerning the verdict. Okay? Could you explain to us, and I know that you don't have time tonight to go into all the details, but could you explain to us the castle law in Texas? And also in terms of the provocateur, meaning, and the difference between the law in Florida and the law in Texas?
I could not, I could not. Unfortunately, that is for another venue, another time. I could not address that.
Can you address it?
First of all, we don't have the castle law in Texas. We have what's called self-defense. And they have the, the right to use deadly force when it's imminent, when it's, there's an imminent use of deadly force against you. So there's a question of whether or not you have to have a retreat. In Texas, you don't. So to a certain extent, there's, there is that sense of if you can show self-defense, that is, that you were about to, someone was about to use deadly force against you, you can use deadly force against them. You can also use deadly force in Texas to protect a third person. If you feel that deadly force is being used against another person, you have the right to use deadly force against that person. So, but basically, it's the law of self-defense in Texas. I don't know about Florida.
Okay. My name is Rita Prater. And I am a member of Robbie Tolan's family. His mother and I are very close, we're first cousins. And when you get a call at 1:00 in the morning that says Robbie's been shot, so many things go through your mind. But our family, as my cousin said, we want to know what else we can do. Okay? So I have some very specific questions. And we want everybody to know what else they can do. We've marched, we've rallied at the courthouse, we've been here, we've done those things. And every little bit helps, but we want to do something else. So my first question is, knowing the situation here in Houston with police injustice, okay? And you're very well aware of that because you said that in one of your opening statements, that there are four criteria that need to be met. So my first question is, who sets the criteria?
Yes.
The law.
Can you be more specific?
Al went over the elements and had the pass out. They're in that pass out.
Okay, sir, I'm, I'm really, can you explain? I don't have a pamphlet. Who sets the criteria?
I, I'm going to say the legislator, legislature sets the criteria because the, the, the actual law is Title 18, 242, and it's articulated in the actual statute.
This is going to be quick.
That's
Okay, so the legislate, thank you. I don't know who those people are. Okay. My next question is, how can we play a role in getting that, those things changed?
I think the biggest way is to contact your local legislative officials. You need to voice displeasure with the way the system is, where the statutes are articulated, because they are articulated in the favor of the officers. I want to make something perfectly clear, too. Someone said that they contacted Sheila Jackson Lee's office regarding the case.
Yes.
And their office did contact the FBI and ask us to initiate an investigation, which unfortunately, Ms. Tolan, I, you know, we, we've talked. I investigated that case as thoroughly as I could. I worked hand in glove with the Department of Justice, the prosecutors, but their office was active in getting us involved.
Okay, okay, that's, that's cool, because I've got to move on.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry. Can you guys tell me of, of a case in this area jurisdiction where an officer was found guilty of the excessive, since it's written, the law is written in their favor?
Officers were charged, the last officer to be charged with a violation. Actually, as I mentioned earlier, the state gets first crack at prosecuting an officer. Officer was charged with murder. And the child's name was Eli Escobar. And that prosecution occurred and that officer actually was found guilty of criminally negligent homicide in the death of that young man. And basically, that is going back to 19, I don't want to misstate it. It was my case and, and I, I worked it.
Eli Escobar.
But it was in the early, early, early 90s. And, and we didn't, we, we didn't prosecute it any further because he was found guilty. Now, the officer didn't get more than 30 days in jail for a murder. Okay? But that was adjudication, okay?
Thank you.
That was the last one.
Al, Mr. Robert? Okay, I just want to say, you know, you know, we have our security, US Attorney has his security, and HPD, of course, has its concerns. Now, I've just got word that they want to escort our US Attorney out of the premises because they feel like the crowd is hostile. Now, now, wait, wait, wait. You know me, I sat here the whole time, I ain't say a word. Now, I'm saying to everybody, including HPD, FBI, US Attorney, that we're here together. We got to talk strong, but then nobody going to do nothing up in here.
I don't feel any hostility.
Okay. So I'm asking, it's HPD, just stand down, stay close, but stand down.
Look, let me just say something.
We're not going to let nothing happen. Excuse me, sir, one moment. I'm just trying to say to our people and our folks, everybody was screened when they came in here. They submitted the check because they know how the nation is. We've put 150,000 people before Minister Farrakhan in the city over 26 years without an arrest, without a problem. And so our people trust us, we handle them, they know we love them. And the way we screen them is such, we do it with love and respect. So we're saying to HPD, FBI, and those who are plainclothes, ain't nothing going to happen. We want him to finish his time, say what he has to say, and we will, we will dismiss him as we welcomed him, thanking him for coming out and doing his public duty. Thank you.
If I may respond, obviously, I think you, I feel the hostility, but I don't take it personal. I'm here because I wanted to be here and for no other reason, to hear you out. I was asked in a, in a, in a respectful way to come here. And out of that respect, I join that respect. And that's why I'm here and for no other reason. So I don't feel any hostility at all.
Last two questions.
Go ahead.
My name is Larry McKenzie. And the question I have is, if we, the people, are unsatisfied with the job of a US Attorney, whether it be in Texas or Florida, who do we complain to?
All right, I'm sorry, I, I was diverted. Could you repeat your question?
Okay, my name is Larry McKenzie. And if we, the people, are dissatisfied with the job that the US Attorney is doing in Texas or Florida, who do we complain to?
Eric Holder and President Barack Obama.
Last question before we have closing comments.
Yes, sir.
Mr. US Attorney?
Sir.
Pattern and practice. You familiar with that, right?
Help me.
Okay, between the two of y'all, or the three of y'all from the US Attorney's Office, y'all pretty much explained y'all's position. That's an attorney in the room. And it, it seems to us that coming to y'all's office really is not going to get something done, but it's not our job to make that determination. So when we do come to your office and, and, and make the cry, maybe like the young lady is right back there, and Ms. Tolan, you know, it, it's just really strange for us to be in here and we pretty much say that that's it for Bobby Tolan. And that the fact that you wasn't here at that time, is there a reason why it is? Or how can we go about getting you to reopen that issue in regards to Bobby Tolan?
Right, Bobby Tolan.
Go ahead.
Let me first of all say to, if I might say, Marion, I am a mother. And there's no greater pain than losing a child. I think you remember the initial response by the family, that you all had to come together. This was enormously tragic, and you wanted to deal with it in a way that you needed to deal with it. You know from the FBI that I did do the process, and they have made a determination. The gentleman asked about the reopening. And so, you know, God works in mysterious ways. My cases come into my office, I'm in one fire over another. I see a number of, my colleague is here, we're in fire after fire. And we get things done. We get matters investigated. We, we got the Harris County Jail investigated and changes have been made, and lives have been saved. We've got people out of prison. But my commitment to you, you, you have a five-year, as I understand, a statute of limitation. Help me, is it 2009? 2008? So we're, if that is the case, we have the ability right now. And I'm going to work with you to seek a reopening, meaning that right to Washington. Because we did follow the procedure. I don't want you to think you were abandoned. That was in the middle of other cases that we were involved in. There's a case a minute here. And I just want to say this, as, as I go to my seat, Representative Dutton is here, who, who is religious on incarceration cases. Representative Green, I know, is my cohort. I want to ask the leader here, Kofi, is, I'm answering a question. I do want to have a, a closing because I have some points. So you need to tell me that I finished answering her question, which is, I want her to know that we are going to proceed quickly, because we're on that deadline, to ask them to look again. Personally, I'm going to be talking to the civil rights, but please know that Brother Tribble did what they do. But we want to go beyond that as extenuating circumstances. Because my pain is the facts that I know. If he was on his property, he was racially profiled. So see, we in another, we in another day now. I want to thank the US Attorney. Sometimes you got to be prickly to try cases. So he may be having a trial lawyers personality, as Brother Durant said, I've seen him that at the courthouse. Sometimes we are prickly as lawyers. We apologize. And I want you to know, though she came up here politely, she's Pastor FM Williams. You know he's a rebel rouser, child. So I want you to know that she is somebody that came out of us and is making a difference down at the US Attorney's Office. So Brother Kofi, I finished, I just do want to have a closing because I have some points. But I thank you, we will get together and working with my colleagues, working for you.
Before she leaves, because that brings up
No, she's not leaving, she's not leaving, she's not leaving.
She brought up a good point I meant to ask earlier about these, these different cases that have been brought. I know particularly Haji Harris, Anthony Childress, and the cases have been brought before Congressman Sheila Jackson Lee and the Department of Justice. And Sheila has told us several times that a pattern has to be established. What determines a pattern? When we have over 2,400 cases of excessive force by HPD in the last 10 years and only .3 of them being prosecuted? What establishes a pattern when there's records and victims like Tashaka, six teeth knocked out of his mouth, his jaw ripped open, Anthony Childress, and nothing's been done about it to today? What establishes this pattern?
The statistics that you stated, in, in color law investigations, there are hundreds of allegations, thousands of allegations. The statistics in the number of convictions are historically lower. It's just the nature of some of these investigations because the elements of the law just are not met. Now, I'm not saying in every case, but in the specific cases that you mentioned, a couple of those are my cases. So I will be talking to you about, you know, what's the circumstance with the outcome of the investigation, without going into details. All I can say is, in that handout, if you cannot meet each of those elements and prove beyond a reasonable doubt, there will not be a prosecution. That's just the nature of the statute. You've got to meet all four of those elements. And if they're not met, there will be no prosecution. Now, someone wrote a letter and asked me to say something, I'm not going to do it. You know who you are. But I'm going to speak to that individual and tell him that I would be remiss in telling anybody to resist a police officer. And I'll leave it at that.
You didn't answer the question about what establishes a pattern?
What establishes a pattern in practice is a consistent number of complaints to Department of Justice. And what you've got to do is get on a campaign, a campaign. You have to articulate in writing to the civil unit of the Department of Justice, the civil rights unit, civil section, about the pattern and practice, whether it is false arrest, whether it is planting of evidence, whether it is racial profiling. You must articulate that and state the time, the circumstance, so they have something to research. Pattern and practice is only established if they have repeat offenses that are articulated in writing.
Again, Dr. Lynn Samuel is now the Acting Assistant Attorney General for the Trust of Civil Rights Committee.
Okay, we're going to come to our closing, we're going to give a chance for some closing comments, but we got a little bit of business to take care of first. Now, we in the grassroots, right? How many of y'all in the grassroots? How many of y'all like this beautiful building? Is it nice and cool in here? Is it beautiful and pretty in here? I know it got a little hot, it didn't, we ain't even get hostile like we could get. For real. You know what I'm saying, Congressman Green, right? Okay? So we're going to do this quietly, but I'm going to have some of the brothers, Brother Dirks. We just going to pass the hat. And we know that freedom ain't free. Don't start leaving. Make sure you put something in the bucket if you want to. Make sure we can give a contribution to the Shaped Center. Make sure that we can make the copies and do the work that we need. We want to remind you that if come out, we meet here every Friday at 7:00 PM. We'll be here Friday at 7:00 PM. On August 28th, we'll be at the Shrine of the Black Madonna at 7:00 PM for the forum on white supremacy and racism. And we will be issuing some tests regarding that. We want to make this point, there, there's a lot of information, statistics. There's a lot of statistics and information that have been done by media outlets, The Houston Chronicle, Channel 13, that have investigated what has happened at HPD. These are not our statistics. These are statistics that show that the process isn't working for us. We asked our congressional representatives particularly to participate because he is a federal-appointed official. You're in Washington. You all are interacting, I don't know which committees, and, but you all are interacting. One of the messages that should go back to President Obama is, Houston, we got a problem. Houston, we got a problem. Any rational and sane person listening here should come with that conclusion. And we hope that our congressional representatives will bring that. The issue of trust, let's say this. See, somebody brought this up earlier. There's a long history of the intelligence community and our organizations. And we can't gloss over that. We can't gloss over the infiltration of our organizations. We can't gloss over the persecution of our political leaders. Don't get up and just tell us Dr. King said, I have a dream. Talk about what the FBI and these other people did infiltrating his organization. Otherwise, it would be disrespectful to him.
Yeah, Garvey too.
Garvey, the Nation of Islam, the Black Panther Party. So these are historical facts that are there. And we should be aware of that as a people and as a community. When we set forth and bring forth these various issues and have these forums. And we're not unaware of that. We're not unaware of Asata Shakur being placed on the We're not unaware of Asata Shakur being placed on the terrorist list.
Come on.
We got to ask that question, Congresspeople.
That's right.
See, it's one thing to go along and get along in certain circles, but when they put a $2 million bounty on her head—
Come on.
—we got to ask our representatives, what is your position relative to that?
That's right.
So we want to state that. We want to—yes. We want to—Congressman Green, did you want to offer—you listen, but did you want to offer any insight into being in the position of a congressperson, and how you and/or your office may be of assistance in what you've heard tonight? And then we'll also go to Congresswoman Lee to do the same. Did you want to offer anything, Congressman Green?
I think it appropriate to thank Brother Robert Muhammad for his words.
Yeah.
He was timely. He was very much in the right tone, and I think it made a difference.
Thank you.
I don't know of any other way to say thank you, other than thank you. And sometimes I give an expression. I want to thank you. Thank you, Brother Robert. Just let me do what my mother taught me. Now, I have to thank Brother Kofi. He called me yesterday and told me that he was having the meeting tonight. We—well, they're right. We are having a meeting tonight, and we ought to be here.
Yeah.
So we are here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Kofi. I'm not a mother. I think that's pretty obvious. But I do have great sympathy with what this mother has said. And it does touch your heart when a mother cries out as you have cried out. It touches my heart. And I don't know what the answer is ultimately for you. I have to be very honest. I don't know what the ultimate answer is. I don't know that we'll make a change. But I promise this. I will do what people are supposed to do, and that is try.
I will try.
And I have found that sometimes, even when you can't make a change, if people sincerely believe you're willing to try, they understand that you did the best you could. That's what we will do. I will join my colleague, Congresswoman Lee. We will both approach the Justice Department, and we will ask. That's all we can do, but we'll do that. In general, you and I, and people—not just people of color, but people who have been marching and protesting, we go back to—I go back to Joe Campos Torres, Billy Keith Joyves, Randall Allen Webster, Reggie Lee Jackson, Idole Delaney—
Byron Gillum.
Byron Gillum.
Bobby Joe Conyers.
Carl Hampton.
Bobby Joe Conyers.
Carl Hampton.
Carl Hampton. The list is long.
Yes, it is.
And we've been in this struggle a long time. We have. But the struggle isn't over. We have to continue, and we have to do it together. I'm grateful that Brother Kofi asked me to come. I needed to hear what the people were saying. It was important for me to hear it. It was important. And I also understand that there are times when people who have not had the benefit of some of the blessings that I've had, when they are going to show their frustrations, and I have to understand that I've got a duty to listen. I've got a duty to listen. So I promise you, we're going to—we will listen, we will act, and we will act jointly. I will act with the benefit of some legal counsel. I'm proud to tell you that my lawyer is here tonight. So he and I collaborate on a lot of things. He didn't have to be here tonight, I'm sure that the other place he could have been, but I just want to mention that Benjamin Hall is in the house. He's my lawyer.
Stand up, man!
That's my lawyer. Now, one of the things that I've hoped to do is have a meeting, and I don't ask anybody to join me, but I'd like to just have a meeting with our U.S. Attorney. I'm not bringing anybody with me, but I do want to meet with him and continue these discussions. I don't think it ought to end tonight. I don't think it ought to end tonight. I think that I will go forward. I don't want it to become a big committee, so I'm not asking anybody to come. But I do believe that additional conversations, discussions about some of the issues that have been raised, and I'll be very candid with you, be very candid with him. I love him. Let me say this before I say what I'm about to say. I love him. I love the sister who's here with him. I hope they love me. But we do have to examine the way we interact with people. We do have to examine. And I'll take all the heat that I need to take from anybody, but I'm going to—I'm going to be very candid, and people are candid with me. We can be candid with each other. We can be candid with each other. So let us—let us go forward together. I look forward to continuing to work with him. And I said to him earlier that this should not be the last meeting. He will tell you that I said it, and that we didn't say it in any kind of raucous, you know, way. But this should not be the last meeting. It should not be the last meeting. I think this is genesis, and I think there are revelations yet to come. Thank you very much.
I think we need to ask the Department of the courthouse, why they don't test these psychotic people that continue to murder us. That's what I think.
Test them.
We need to examine them. They are sick, okay?
That's right.
We're going to go to Deloyd, then we're going to come to you, Congressman.
Just give me one.
Give—Brother Deloyd is speaking.
One second, brother, just one second. I had very little expectations as to what was going to come out of this. And I'm not saying that as a cynic. I'm saying that as a realist. Very few expectations. I guess because I concluded before I got here that the system was broken. Severely damaged. And we can only expect so many things to come out of the mouths of those who operate—who work the system. And this is not—I don't want to be disrespectful, I'm not putting anybody down. I'm just a realist. So I just wanted to share with you that our work—we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
And it's not going to be in meetings like this. The work that we have to do is going to be in changing that system, turning it inside out, upside down, and making it work for the masses.
That's right.
Because as of now, it does not.
That's right.
Now, that's clear. If it's broken, you fix it, right?
That's right.
You have to find out how to fix it. We were given some direction earlier about how we can fix it. And some of those things we were given about how to fix it earlier had to do with legislative change, had to do with congressional change. I mean, it had to do—with—that's one way. But the real changes will come from us. We decide that we're not going to take anymore, and we're not going to allow the system to continue to stay broken. So I'm saying that on—you hear where I'm coming from, huh? So I'm just saying, on behalf of Shakes Community Center, it's not partisan to say that I want to fix this system. It's real. It's not partisan to say that we—the system is broken. That's real. Because if what they expound was—is the truth, and that's all that can be done, this system must be broken. So I just wanted to share that, because I've been sitting and listening, and I just—is that okay, Munira?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just have to—okay, Kofi, that's it.
Thank you, Brother Deloyd. Give him a hand. Congresswoman Lee.
Brother Kofi, thank you for your hospitality, and likewise, it is my honor and privilege to be in the room with all of you in terms of being part of the family. I do want to, even though they may have been called out, Brother X is just going out, we thank him. Judge Zanetta Bernie, thank you very much. Representative Boris Miles, the people who I can see, I'm not sure if I'm missing anyone, thank you very much. And Representative Harold Dutton, who is here. All of these folk in the state system deal with the issue of criminal justice. I do want to offer—you know that a tragedy and death is not what we get up in the morning and wish for. We—I tell people that if you got to know Sabrina Fulton, she would much rather be hugging Trayvon right now. But she told us, Marin, as your son has become, although he lives with pain, that if they are symbols, we need to do something about it. And so—I'm not going to say miraculously, but a change has come over Washington. I'm sorry people are dead because of it. When you gave your 2,000—we've been struggling with those numbers. We had a hearing with John Conyers. I know, we gave those to the Justice Department, Crystal. We didn't let them languish. Kofi, you helped organize the hearing. It was packed. But it always has to be a significant moment. So let me give you three things that you have brought about. When the Attorney General spoke before the ABA, he used it to get the word out. Three things. Compassionate relief is now going to be enhanced out of the United States federal prison. They're going to change the guidelines and look to more people incarcerated for compassionate relief. That they shouldn't be there, they've been there too long. That wasn't two weeks ago. And you've been talking about that? We've been talking about that. We've introduced bills. The other thing is to acknowledge that he is directing the United States Attorney Community to develop specific locally tailored guidelines to determine when federal charges should be filed and when they should not. Everybody that comes through there should not be charged federally. This is not about police issues. But this is folk who get charged in the federal system and their mandatory minimums. Then they're going to be reviewing the mandatory minimums. I think we're going to see a coming to a close on mandatory minimums. At least coming to a close in terms of the consistent use of them. Now, that has come out of the speech by the U.S. Attorney, which I think that you need to know it. And then finally, this whole issue of racial disparities that people would murmur about and talk about, and we introduced bills. I want you—people, we're not sitting up there like lumps on the log in Washington. I'm on the Judiciary Committee. Time after time, we introduced racial disparities amendments, and we were voted down. So now, we have a vehicle through what we call the executive measure. Attorney General. So one thing, Crystal, I'm going to do with your list again, as they say. We need to get it to the FBI again, and we need to get it directly to the Justice Department again. Because tragically, tragically, life has been lost, and things have turned, and recognition has come. The NSA—you talking about COINTELPRO. Finally, the NSA. Everybody now knows what you're talking about, Kofi. What you're talking about, Minister. What the nation has been talking about. Everybody knows about it. We're writing bills, we can't write them fast enough. The question is whether we come together as a nation and address the question for law enforcement to do their job, and for your civil rights and civil liberties to be protected. We've got to stand for that. I want to do as Congressman Green did. I want to thank Crystal, Kofi, Deloyd, and I want to thank the minister. A young statesman, not an elder statesman. And I just want to say this as I go to my seat. Folk—I—and let me not say this like I'm not in the neighborhood—to Ken, people are in pain, okay? People are hurting. They've been in these meetings, they've talked over and over and over again. Look, you can hit me. God knows, I go down and I stand up. It's okay, because I understand the pain. But if you get me again, or get me again, I hear you, I'm moving fast. So I know when you call. I hear you, but I'm moving fast. So what you're saying is—the—what was the follow-up? But you heard what the answer, but we're going to come back to you again. But what I do want to say is that we recognize—I want to thank—I know it won't get me—I want to thank the Houston Police Department, because I want you to say that there are police officers every day that are doing their job and putting their lives on the line, what we want. What we want. And I want to thank them. I want to thank them. I want you to give them applause, you can do that. I want you to thank them. And I want you to know—
They don't report the ones that kill us. No. They don't testify against them. No.
I got you. And we've got another system that we have to pound on to make it work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm with you. So all I can say is, thank those who have worked and fixed the system that is broken. And you coming here tonight are part of helping us fix the system that is broken. None of us are perfect, but we are going to stay on the battlefield to get it right. Is that okay? We just going to stay on the right. I do want to acknowledge Holanda Garcia, I didn't see you before. Kofi, thank you very much.
Thank you, Congresswoman Lee. Did you want to have anything to close up?
See, those people are paid, you know, and they got pensions. I say stop their pensions every time they mess us up. Stop their pensions. That's a federal law.
Thank you. What I wanted to say in conclusion is that this is the first time I've come to a meeting that I was asked to come to. When I was asked, I came, and I'm nothing more than myself, and I have a duty to do, and I will do it. However, I will continue to work with the community in any way I can to answer all your questions and to serve the people of the United States. Thank you.
Let me say this, and we're going to get our last closing statements from this side.
Kim.
Right. We have Kim here. I want to let you know, communityjustus.com, if you want to find out what we're doing. Earlier, we spoke about speaking to Attorney Benjamin Crump, and what the Martin family wanted to communicate, or what he wanted to communicate on their behalf. Some of you came in late. He said, "Everybody go to change.org petition and sign the petition that would support the Trayvon Martin Amendment to overturn stand-your-ground or similar laws across the country." On August 28th, one week from today, how many of y'all tied? Let me see you show your hands.
No, I'm not.
How many of y'all tied? Tied—not tied, tied.
No.
No, put your hand down, Ben. I said—I'm trying to say tired.
No, I'm not tired.
I'm sorry, I've been down here a long time.
Fired up, Kofi.
We fired up, because, see, we are long-distance runners here.
That's right.
And if we want some real change, that's what it's going to take. How many of y'all down with that? Some real commitment, some real sacrifice. That's what we're going to have to do. With that being said, our last two closing comments will come from Sister Crystal Muhammad, and then Brother Robert Muhammad, and we will dismiss. Sister Crystal Muhammad.
Believe it or not, I do like to thank Ken Madison for having the cojones to show up today. But at the same time, there's a lot of work to be done. We're not going to lighten up at all. In fact, we're duplicating. We're not just being elitist without organizing. We are training and organizing other people. I want to again thank everybody with Community Justice that helped to put this together, and that's helping to put together the program Wednesday. And I thank Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee, Al Green, Ben Hall, who's leaving, who's running for mayor, who had the guts to show up tonight.
Thank you.
Boris Miles, who was here earlier, Harold Dutton, because there are a lot of—we have some people that are running for office, Georgia Provost, Asata. I mean, it says something when elected officials have the heart to come and answer the tough questions. And, you know, this isn't a dog and pony show.
That's right.
You know, you dealing with some of the starch-cold grassroots organizers. And—but more so than that, I would like to thank everybody that came out today in the audience, because the people are who make it happen. And as Kofi said, we want to invite y'all out. I'll thank Brother Deloyd Parker, who—the Shakes Community Center is our embassy. Judge Zanetta Bernie, we see you back there, she's a freedom fighter, she's always getting things done. Brother PJ, who does our website. But I just want to thank everybody who came out, but the work is not over. Sister Cool, who led us on the radio show at the last minute. Sister Cool who led us on the radio show at the last minute, Sister Neo, Brother Robert. Um, it's the collective of the people that makes it happen. And Friday at 7 o'clock, we'll be right back here in two days organizing. This is a, a human rights movement. It's, it's civil rights as well, but these are all about human rights. And, uh, as Kofi said, we didn't have our flyers together, we apologize, but we'll make sure we get them out. Make sure you meet us at 7 o'clock Wednesday at the Shrine of the Black Madonna.
That's the anniversary.
The, oh, and the reason why we're doing it, that is the 50th anniversary of the March on Washington. There's a lot of people that are gonna be traveling to Washington this weekend. We offer your prayers that you have a safe trip, but on that day, we will be having a frank discussion about white supremacy and try to get down to this issue. And, uh, with that being said, I would like to pass this over to, uh, one of my first teachers, Brother, I mean, I've had school teachers, but revolutionary teachers, Brother Robert Mohammed.
Brother Robert is gonna close us out and we thank you for staying. Brother Robert, give him a strong hand, give Brother Robert a strong.
Okay, Mr. Madison has to go to police to try and escort him out, but let me simply say this as, as we close. To Mr. Madison, to our House of Representatives, uh, Sheila Jackson Lee, of course, this is her district and of course, our Congressman Al Green, to all elected officials, to HPD and all who are here, uniformed and ununiformed. To the Tolent family, to all those who have suffered. What you have witnessed tonight is simply this. We are not arson investigators. What you heard from us today is we're like the fire marshal. We're trying to prevent what will happen. Because dissatisfaction the Honorable Judge Mohammed teaches us brings about a change. And the people are becoming more and more dissatisfied, not just black people, but white people and everyone across this country are just totally dissatisfied with the dysfunction of our government and how we're being treated. And so, our job is, as written in Ezekiel, the third chapter is, "Son of man, I've made thee a watchman over the house of Israel and give them warning. And if the righteous mess up, their righteousness will not be remembered, God will put a stumbling block in front of them and they will die in their iniquity and so too with the unrighteous." But our job is to give warning. Because if we give warning and you continue in this regard, then God's wrath will come down, the people will rise up, but the blood of the people will not be on our hands because we told you. Now, there's a price for us standing up and doing the things that we do. Each one of us may face one day investigation, indictment or whatever. We may become political prisoners, but we're willing to pay that price for you. The question is tonight, if you are not satisfied with what you receive tonight, what are you gonna do about it?
Right.
What are we gonna do about it? And we have, there's a certain responsibility we have as a community to do something for ourselves. And if this system does not work for us, we have a right, a God-given right, to abolish it, alter it, change it and replace it with something for ourselves. We all have that right. So, we're giving you the opportunity to fix it. So, let us now close in prayer. Can we do that?
Yeah.
May Allah bless you brothers and sisters. Have safe travel. Again, Mr. Madison, excuse me, Mr. Green, uh, Congressman Green. Mr. Madison, thank you again for coming. Mr. Tribble.
Kim.
Kim, thank you, you know, you know how to hit us up, call us up Sister. And, uh, of course, Lieutenant Finney, thank you on behalf of the chief and HPD uniformed officers. We, uh, hope that you, uh, understand what Mother Denver was talking about. You the thin blue line between chaos and order. And if you don't report the bad apples, then the whole thing breaks down. There's not even enough police to police all of the population if everybody just decided they gonna run stoplights. Just remember that. Let us pray.
And thank you Congresswoman Lee.
Congresswoman Lee, she, this is, this is her district, we hosting here, we thank you. The gentle, the gentle lady of Texas has been recognized. Let us pray. In the name of Allah the beneficent and merciful, all praise is due to Allah the Lord of the worlds, the beneficent and merciful master of the day of judgment. The alone do we serve, the alone do we beseech for help. Allah guides us along the right path, the path of those upon whom thou hast bestowed thy favors, not the path of those upon whom thy wrath is brought down, nor those who go astray. Allah, we beseech thy help and we ask thy mercy, for we believe in you and trust in you for all that we need. We are helpers in your cause with your apostle. Please Allah grant us success. Amen. All right, brothers and sisters, let Mr. Madison get out, uh, make a corridor so that, uh, he may get out. Once again, thank you all for coming out. Thank you Kim for all that you've done. It is what it is, you know.